Item E3. It is 10:49 here on January 25th, 2021. We're going to continue our council work session. We're going to continue in the questions with respect to the homelessness briefing. Do we have Diana with us?
She and Director Hayden are being moved over.
Okay.
I am here.
Okay, good. Colleagues, let's see if we can get through the Q and A on this briefing. Does anybody have any questions for Diana? Yes, Kinsey.
Thank you, and thank you, Diana, for all the hard work that you're doing to make these pro lodges work. I was wondering if you had responses to the questions that I sent you last week? I know there were quite a few, but if we could review those.
Absolutely.
Concerns that have been brought up so far about item 31 in particular.
And so some of these, I think, I'm not sure, I know Alex had answered some of them, so I'm not certain which ones have already been communicated, council member, but we can go one by one and answer all of them. The first question is about any meaningful input from the community regarding the purchase of the hotel. And so I think we mostly touched on this in terms of, you know, the difficulty of communicating with stakeholders before there is site control of the property. But our intent then is that we will both identify explicitly any neighborhood association or neighborhood contacts on the residential side who are immediately adjacent and work with the council member offices on this and any other hotel to identify stakeholders you'd like to make sure we reach out to.
Thank you. I would like to make it known that the Anderson Mill Limited District has reached out to my office, and they are currently strongly opposing.
Okay.
Hotel purchase. And it would also be prudent for us to reach out to Piccon Park Place, which are small residential townhomes in close proximity to the hotel.
The second question was regarding public transportation nearby and a concern that there wasn't any meaningful public transportation within proximity. And so there are three areas I think are important here. One is that, you are correct, the nearest bus stops are .7 and .8 miles away. However, it is quite close to the Lakeline Metro Station as a primary transit hub, but we acknowledge that we're going to have to solve for that sort of last mile transportation, if you will. We have had, in other cases, some success working with Capital Metro to see if we can move a bus station closer to the property. However, we also, in other properties, have had a van onsite that is available to staff to transport tenants either to a transportation node or to common sites that they need to use for errands, groceries, et cetera. We've also been told that because permanent supportive housing is reserved for people who are chronically homeless and therefore by definition are living with a disability, it's fairly frequent that these individuals have Medicaid benefits which also cover transportation services for them, particularly as relates to their medical needs.
Just to provide clarity here, my understanding is that the park and ride for the Lakeline Mall area is 2.1 miles away.
Okay.
Which equates to a 41-minute walk, and they would have to pass over through some very busy intersections and thoroughfares. I'm glad to hear that there will be an option of putting another bus stop onsite or providing that van transportation.
Right, yeah, we would not anticipate that people walked to that site as their primary means of arriving. So there's a question around what services would be brought onsite. You mentioned that there was indigent healthcare in Cedar Park. That was a VA clinic with women and children's services. So the way we would typically see this work in a property like this is that case management is onsite, so there are staff there, and they are providing social services and in some cases outpatient mental health services, really just in terms of that intensive case management. So they are working day to day with those individuals to help them maintain their housing stability, but also really connecting them with services. Again, we would anticipate that a van would be, one of the most common uses of that would be for access to healthcare. It would seem likely that the primary care of choice for most of these folks would be our community care clinics, and we can find out where the closest community care clinic is for each of those, as well as any other clinics that could be relevant.
Okay, thank you for that. I am curious, the services that are onsite, by having them onsite, is it affecting the utilization of some of the rooms available for residents?
Yes, so in most cases, as we look at these two hotels, they are currently 83 rooms and 65 rooms. We assume that depending on the current configuration of the building, we would give over some number of rooms to offices and/or additional common spaces. The Piccon Park property actually has more common space and more offices, so we might only lose three or four units for that property. The property on Burnett has substantially less, and so we think that we'd probably take five rooms or more to create some of that space. There was a question, council member, regarding the proximity of the nearest grocery store, which I believe Alex has confirmed is there are HEB and Walmart Supercenter at 1.1 mile and 1 mile away. We have not done a formal traffic study, and there are pedestrian protected intersections at those underpasses, but again, would anticipate working to ensure that there are some alternatives to simply walking there. Then there was a question regarding the impact for emergency services. I do not know currently the response time to that area. Alex has reached out to ascertain that from the fire department. There are not onsite community paramedics, that's not typically necessary for these properties, but staff are there in case anything would emerge from a health perspective. They are well-trained in that sort of crisis management, connecting with emergency services if that is necessary.
Hey Diana, to add to that, I did hear back from AFD, and let me know that this fire station 34 is 1.3 miles away, and the response time is at seven minutes or less, which is well within their goal of having an eight-minute response time.
Thank you for that. Real quick, Diana, I was hoping that maybe you could tell me a little bit about what well-trained meant. Is there a certain level of BLS training that those individuals onsite have that we could be aware of?
So let's look into that. I would expect that to be the case, but I shouldn't speak for our service providers. All of the case managers are typically credentialed in one way or another, and so we can talk to the service providers about what that is and get back to you on that front. The subsequent question is around the input from business owners. We, I think Alex and I both communicated with a representative of one of the nearby businesses last week. We had went back and forth a bit via email, and I have asked this week that our community engagement specials follow up and perhaps set a meeting, because that was all fairly, you know, quick conversation back and forth previous to some meetings. And again, then we would, if you have had folks explicitly reach out to you, we're available to sit down and speak with them about the project.
Thank you for that. I do have plans to connect us all together with the business community and then as well as the residential community. I will say, though, that right now with the oversounding emails and calls that we're getting and feedback regarding not wanting this in the community, while there is a need, and I expressly see that need, I would not feel comfortable moving forward with this purchase until we're able to get that educational component to the community. And so my recommendation for council is going to be to postpone on Wednesday. I just wanted to get that out there. And then also, Alex, if you could confirm for the rest of the council that there will be no problem with postponing as far as the negotiations go?
Yes, and sorry, I didn't say my name. Alex Gale, Officer for the Office of Real Estate Services. Yes, Councilmember Kelly, we did talk with the property owner, and we think our negotiations would still be okay if this item was postponed to the first meeting in February, potentially that second meeting in February as well. But we think we would be okay with that, as far as our negotiations.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions that I have.
Thank you. To add in, colleagues, I just want to let you know that I got a call from Williamson County Commissioner Cynthia Long, who is the county commissioner in this area. Also, she was asking for postponement of consideration of 31 and raised concerns about this happening in her precinct without advance notice to her to be able to look at. I talked to her about the difficulty in a real estate transaction in making these issues public before properties are tied up. But I want you to know that her concern and interest remain, and I said I would convey that to the council. Councilmember Kassar.
Just for the benefit of everybody discussing this before our vote in a couple of days, you know, I certainly respect and understand everyone's ability to vote the way that they feel most comfortable. And we've heard and received similar emails on some of these hotels, including the hotels we purchased in District 3 and in District 4. I think it was the right decision to purchase those in District 3 and District 4, and I feel confident voting for both of these hotels on Thursday. Of course, we'll respect the will of the majority. I'm glad to hear and think it's really important for us to communicate to the property owner that if this does get postponed, that it won't throw it off track. But I feel just as comfortable voting yes on Wednesday as I would a week later because of the urgency of the work and because this creates an opportunity for us to pull, you know, nearly 150 people off the street, and then over the years of owning these properties, we'll be able to pull hundreds more. So I really appreciate the staff working diligently to bring these forward. I appreciate the service providers for stepping up and offering these forward and offering to provide the services. I appreciate the council for taking the bold step of reinvesting dollars away from just a policing approach to a housing approach. That's the only way we can get these hotels running is because of the reallocation we did in the budget. We're purchasing the hotels using the housing bond, but we are only able to actually purchase and rent them because of the budget that we passed. So I think because it has been so many months of work and it's so high priority, I feel confident voting yes on Wednesday.
Okay, Leslie.
I wanted to just mention that one of the reasons why the item for the hotel purchase in District 7 will move forward on Wednesday is because we did have the time, since I was on the council and knew about it coming, and staff had advised my office about it. So we were able to reach out to the surrounding community over a number of weeks this month and before people were sworn in the first part of January and trying to get their seat legs. So I recognize that our new colleague, Councilmember Kelly, is trying real hard to represent her community and be their voice and to get them the necessary accurate information so that they have a fuller appreciation of what's going on. And to that extent, I respect her request for the postponement on item 31 and would support that. And of course, our staff can tell us if the one-week delay, and also, McKinsey, you should tell us if a one-week delay would help or if we would need to push it to February 18. I agree with my other DIAS colleagues that I would like to see us complete these purchases, but I think there is room within our timeframes to make sure that the community's questions are answered and that you be given the opportunity to represent as robustly as you desire with the folks who have put you in office.
I had, I don't want to, I have questions about more generally homelessness presentation, but I don't want to cut short.
Can you move your microphone closer to you?
Oh, sure. I have questions about the general homelessness presentation. Is it appropriate to launch into those now, or are we still discussing the hotel motel?
Let's complete the conversation about the hotels. Anybody else want to talk about the hotels? McKinsey?
Yes, first, I wanted to thank Councilmember Poole for her support and postponement of this issue, and I wanted to clarify some of what Councilmember Kassar said. I'm not in opposition of this hotel being purchased. My understanding is that the work that will be done there is very important and vital to our neighbors experiencing homelessness, and we do need to move forward with finding places for these individuals to go. My concern is that we haven't had a chance to have meaningful input from the community, and this hotel in particular backs up directly to single-family residential homes, and I believe that their input should be taken and we should use it as an educational opportunity to let them know what our plan for this use of this property is. Thank you.
Colleagues, yes, Senator Lee, PO.
Yes, and you know, I agree that we should have reached out to the neighborhood. The roadway end that I approved and supported was also, but against the neighborhood there. And there was a lot of concerns, but you know, what they saw, that the improvement that went on in that hotel was so good, so great, because we were able, that particular place, I don't know about the one in District 6, but it was used as a place where they ran prostitution, they had a lot of drug sales there, and what we did was that we improved that whole area there, because we don't, we're not in that kind of business. So we're trying to help our homeless population and get them off the street. And so you can also look into what the roadway end and how it helped the neighborhood around there, and that'd be one of the areas that you can also take back to your neighborhood and say, let's take a look, a close look at how this hotel or hotel is being used and what kind of improvement are we going to have there, because you're going to have someone there at the door that's controlling everything and letting people in and out. So it's sometimes becomes a blessing when you buy these places.
Anne.
I just had a question for Councilmember Kelly, if she had a thought in mind on how much additional time she was thinking of in terms of talking with her community.
Thank you for asking that. I think a week would give us plenty of time to hold several telecalls. I apologize about the dogs, and then we could move forward.
Thank you. Anything else on this item? Okay, Kathy, let me turn it over to you to more general questions on homelessness.
Yeah, thanks so much, and thanks, and welcome, Diane. Glad to have you at the helm of this work. This is, it's really great to have you here. I had a couple of quick questions. I had seen the news, I think it was from the National Housing Coalition. They highlighted the fact that FEMA has now, under the executive order, well, under whatever shifts that have happened with the new administration, changed from a reimbursement rate of 75% to 100% for things such as the pro lodge. Do you have a sense or an estimate of how much money we may have budgeted for the city's portion of that 25% of the pro lodge?
I do not, council member. You know, those dollars are, my understanding, running through EOC currently, and Vella has been tracking that closely, so we can follow up on that.
Sure, thanks, sorry to ask you such a specific question. I'm just saying, I guess I just want to say that that's, you know, a pretty great change, and I think that frees up some additional funding that we didn't know we had a couple weeks ago. So I'm excited about the possibilities of how we might be able to use that. The pro lodges capacity, I'm struggling a bit with. There are two numbers I'm not clear on. One is, it sounded like in one of our previous conversations, I thought I had heard that the pro lodges were at capacity. From today's presentation, it looks as if they are not. So Diane, can you address?
Sure.
Address the additional beds that are available and how staff intend to use those.
Right. So what I do know is that it has been a moving number for a variety of reasons. We, as you know, when we thought we were going to decommission the pro lodges, we began to, as people exited, to not refill those rooms, and then changed course when we decided that it was going to be prudent to keep them open. So some of those rooms then are unoccupied but did need cleaned or repaired. We also have had a tranche of rooms at the roadway that was not occupied because of renovations that were happening there. So I would like to go back to staff because truly those numbers are changing daily, and we can come back with an accurate accounting of just how many rooms there are, how many have humans in them, and how many are actually available for occupancy at this time.
That's great. Would the intention be, assuming they are ready to be used and not in need of renovation, is the intention to fill those?
Yeah, I believe so. I believe they have already started moving people in, yes.
And then, I believe, and what's, one of the wonderful reasons why some of those are vacant is that individual into permanent housing. And I thought I had heard a higher number for that, but is this the most official count at this point, 149, that was in your presentation today?
Yes, that's the number that I received, I think, yesterday.
Well, thanks to staff and our partners who have helped make that possible. One more quick question, and then one that may take a little bit more time. But the public library, thanks for highlighting our public library efforts. I think this is one of the many efforts that the city's engaged in that the public isn't always aware of. I know some downtown residents one day gave me a list of ideas, and most of them are actually in progress to one extent or another, and one was the idea of having onsite individuals to help at the public library, to interact and to provide, to be a resource at the public library. At one point, we had some graduate classes or some social workers in training who were a part of that initiative at the public library, and I wondered if you could, and if you don't have that information now, if you could get back to us on whether any of those efforts are still, whether those relationships still exist and could be implemented once we're back in a full, in full public mode at our libraries.
Yes.
Because I think that was a really great, excuse me, one sec, a really great idea, both for those students but also for the city to work with them. And then I would, my last question is maybe going to take a bit more response, but you know, as you know, and I know you and I and some other colleagues have talked about the situation in some of those public spaces, and in particular, the growing number of individuals camping on parkland, especially down at the hike and bike trail. Hello, where on?
I have to take a quiet.
And so, sorry, we have school going on here as well. Could you please address why individual, what the Parks Department is doing with regard to individuals who are on our parkland at the hike and bike trail, and whether you and staff are working on kind of a longer-term solution? We are, as you are aware, receiving lots of information from, or lots of questions from constituents about the encampments down at the hike and bike trail and what the, why they are being allowed to remain and kind of what the longer-term strategy is with regard to individuals.
So we were certainly having those conversations, council member, and Kimberly McNeil may be available. I know she is at least going to be listening in. And I don't think I'm in a position to give you any one answer there. We are, of course, dealing with a lot of tensions insofar as we have CDC guidelines that suggest we not move encampments at present, and as a community, we have largely been following those, except in cases of explicit dangers to health or safety. And I know that PARD has wanted to be sensitive to whether they can actually direct someone to another place to be. So I don't know if Kimberly is on this afternoon, and we can certainly come back to you, but it is a conversation that we're actively having about what a reasonable response is in a situation which we are not currently able to give the managers of our public spaces the kind of resources that they need in order to, in this case, to enforce that ordinance in such a way that feels useful and actually changes anything, because the sense is that people would just move, you know, a few feet away.
Thank you for that response. I think too, if you would just, for the public's benefit, explain the CDC, the rationale for the CDC guidance.
Absolutely. So the CDC guidance suggests that we should not, that municipalities and governments in general should not be clearing campsites because there are people there who are typically interacting in a small social group, much like a bubble or a pod that we might have with our neighbors, and that when they are forced to clear a particular area, it is anticipated that they then would move on, find other places to be, and quite likely interact with new individuals in close quarters. So there is a concern about the likelihood of transmission there, and it is intensified because of the common chronic health issues that our neighbors experiencing homelessness live with, which makes them more vulnerable to the virus.
Thank you very much.
So council members, this is Kimberly McNeil from Parks and Recreation Department. I have to compare with what Diana did just explain to you. I do want to also let you know that the Parks and Recreation Department has visited a number of encampments on parkland and advised individuals that they are not permitted to be on parkland, right? So we advise individuals of what the current ordinance says. We ask those individuals to begin making plans or considering what alternatives they may have to being on parkland. We also do connect or do our best to connect those individuals with our other service providers like Intercal Care, like Host, like PATH, those entities that help provide certain resources that the Parks and Recreation Department does not have. We also try to provide information about leave no trace, which is how to be environmentally sensitive in the space in which you are currently residing, and we also help individuals understand that there's going to come a time when understand that there's going to come a time when they are not going to be able to remain in that space. And just to concur with what Diana said, our challenge at this time for some of those locations is, where is the best place to ask people to relocate to? As we fear that if we ask them to relocate, they'll select another location that is neither, just not the most appropriate location, and then we'll have to relocate those individuals again. So we have been working with Diana's office even before Diana came on board, and will continue to do so, and we're very aware of the space, of the spaces that are of concern to our community, and we're trying to address those systematically.
Thank you. Thank you, Director McNeely.
Okay. Kathy, just by way of mention, I talked to Ralph about the administration's letter asking or saying that the FEMA reimbursement should be 100% for the non-congregate sheltering. And he pointed out to me that that was really good news, but that it was a letter, not even an executive order, and it contained a provision that said, consistent with law, so it doesn't suggest a change in the law, but to the degree that it is consistent with what our interpretation of what the existing law is. The hope is, is that that's going to help us with FEMA, but still an undecided issue at this point. So our staff's lobbying efforts in that resolution continue. Unfortunately, it's not a clean establishment of the policy.
Thanks for that additional context.
Allison.
Thank you. I want to follow up on the concerns raised by Councilmember Tovo in a slightly different way. And first, I want to, you know, acknowledge the positive news that Diana is conveying with respect to our hotel acquisition and conversion strategy, that, you know, if we move forward with these two hotels across these next couple of council meetings, that will be at or near our original target of the 300 rooms, you know, and just, you know, when we set out with this strategy and we set our numbers, we were not in COVID, and there are opportunities that we see in light of that, and I think that's positive. Also want to acknowledge the ESG funding and the rapid rehousing possibilities for 550 households by end of fiscal year '22. I think that's all really good news. However, when we go and we look at the numbers that we are trying to address, just if we did a snapshot of time view of it, we are saying we have 1,574 unsheltered a night, and those numbers don't get even all those people in one night off, and we know that we have 9,000 experiencing homelessness each year that we also have to worry about. So we're not yet there in meeting the need for housing. And for a long time, we have chosen to emphasize the long-term investments that we believe are better solutions and have not seriously taken into consideration temporary options. And so I wanted Diana to speak to this question of whether we should be considering designated camping areas, and what is the process, and where does that fit into the plan? The camping and parking that we are, in parks that we are seeing is new camps. These are not, you know, these are new camps that are being formed as opposed to moving camps that are established for many months. And I think, I think we might all agree that where some of that camping is happening right now is not where we would designate it if we had to designate it, but it is default a designated camping area, and there has to be a better approach. So can you speak to what the options are and how staff is thinking about that and where that fits, and how thinking may have evolved now that we've moved, you know, beyond the initial forays into this process?
So first of all, I do want to say that I think the month of February is going to be really critical, not just from the division standpoint, but from the community standpoint and coming together and thinking about not only what types of interventions we need, but how much to actually make a change in terms of the, A, the unsheltered numbers that we are seeing right now, but not just moving those folks into shelter or into more palatable camping spaces, but understanding that we have a road to permanent housing for them. I, from my perspective, nothing is off the table at present, right? So long as we are holding to our values about respecting the rights of these neighbors and that our intent is to provide housing. I think that we need to look at the cost, the timeline, right, and the adequacy of any number of shelter options, if you will. That does not exclude sanctioned campgrounds. I think that that clearly typically would provide facilities that were not as complete as you would see in a structure, right, or a series of small non-congregate shelters. But I think it's on the table, and I think that, you know, with staff, we can look at all of those options and come back to you with, at least initially, what we believe the pros and cons of those are, with an eye toward identifying more concrete strategy.
Thank you. I think it's really important that we get that information about the pros and cons. I don't actually know at this point in time where we stand with that. I understand the advice that was given at a much earlier stage, but I think we are at a different point in time, and I think it's important that we reassess. And I just want to be clear that when I talk about a designated camping, it could certainly include the pop-up shelters, the, I forget what you, the individual structures, so that it's non-congregate. There are many different ways that that could be structured and how that could look, and I, you know, I agree completely with the goal that, the goal is to get people to housing, but where people and how people are camping right now does not seem particularly humane, and we, I just, you know, we have to ask the question about whether we can get to that other place quick enough, or if we need to put some temporary steps in place along the way, and we have to openly confront that and have that information out there. It is possible that the conclusion will be that that's not appropriate, but I think it's really important that we have that information and that we are able to consider that as one of the steps, one of the many steps that we might take. And particularly if we are going to address the camping in the parks, which is not allowed right now, we need to, we really do need to think about if there's a better alternative. The Parks Department is under, is, you know, does not have the resources, does not have any place to move people to, and those are really very valid concerns. But I think we need to be creative about what the solution is and be open and honest that we have that problem and find a way forward for the community so that we continue to have support for the end goal of housing everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Alter. I think that your comments and also Councilmember Tovo's comments are well said, and I appreciate hearing those. And so the only thing I would just add to the comment so far is, I just want to speak to the non-congregate aspect of it. I think that that can make a difference in whether a designated shelter area is safe and appropriate for someone, because the ability to put in place those pallet homes or whatever you want to call them, the non-congregate approach to shelter really provides some privacy to people and gives them their own space, and can also give them better shelter than they have in a tent right now from the, from the weather and from other things. And so I know that, I know that Ms. Gray will look at that aspect of it too as they're examining, in response to your question, Councilmember Alter, as they're examining the possibilities there. I also know that there are efforts going on at the Esperanza community, for example, to employ those kinds of, those kinds of non-congregate shelter opportunities like pallet homes or things like that. And so, anyway, I look forward to, I look forward to what we receive back from staff about that, because I do share the concern about what we're experiencing in the parks. We have some parks areas and green belt areas in District 5 also. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I want to just add my voice to some of the other sentiment that's been expressed. I know that obviously is a topic that's being discussed with great urgency, as it has been in the community. I think there are two things that we need. We need to have that implementation schedule that tells us over time how long it's going to take to get this done and what has to happen, benchmarks along the way so that people can measure progress. But I also agree with my colleagues that we need to do something with greater urgency on the immediacy of the challenge that the community faces, and I'm encouraged to hear, you know, the continued conversations in that regard. I think it's significant that, you know, when we first looked at this, that we had pretty much taken off the table designated camping areas, because it's not something that is, that is generally desirable. At the same time, we have an emergency situation and need for rapid housing that may very well trump that. So I appreciate the conversation, the investigations going on in that area, because I think we need to do both things, the long-term plan as well as dealing more. I think it's real significant, I mean, for me, going back to where we were in the past is not the right solution, because all that does is hide people experiencing homelessness. The challenge grows until it becomes of a scale we can't do something about it. We still have a scale that we can, and I'm encouraged with all the work that's being done, the conversations that are being teed up, both within the city and outside the city, to be able to recognize that we shouldn't go back, because that's not a good choice, but we need to continue with this work and do better than we are now. Further discussion? Natasha?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief. I just wanted to make certain that my constituents know, in a situation like this, if I'm not contributing to the dialogue, it's certainly not because it's not important, it's also certainly not because we haven't heard your concerns and questions. We are asking many, many questions and exploring all the possibilities behind the scenes and with our colleagues, and I don't have any questions in this setting. That does not mean that you are not being represented as far as the subject matter is concerned. So thank you.
Yes, Kesar Fuentes.
Thank you. This question is for Diana. Can you share a little bit more about the housing, the homeless planning summit that we're planning for February and what the community can expect with that summit and kind of the format, if that's figured out just yet?
You're muted.
So the city is not actually the convenor of that summit. It is being convened by a variety of community folks, including the DAA and Echo, and Mayor may be able to speak more broadly to some of the folks who are putting that together, with the idea being that we really come to some concrete goals that we share as a community and hold each other accountable. It is not framed as a long planning session, but rather taking the action plan to end homelessness that Echo released, I believe in 2018, and perhaps updated in 2019, but taking those strategies and attaching metrics to them, so the number of units of housing, shelter beds, et cetera, that we want to produce and when.
I really don't want to get out in front of those folks that are organizing it, and I don't think that they're at a place yet to really talk about what their kind of vision is. I share the same vision that Diana has, and we'll have to wait and see what it is that comes from those folks. But I think that they're still at a kind of a premature place discussing it. Hopefully, they can bring something to the community. Allison? You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So I wanted to go back to the last slide of the looking forward and just acknowledge the really important work that's being done to define the roles of the city and Echo and the other partners. You know, one of the challenges we've had is that the city has been trying to be all things to all people on this, and I think what we've seen from lessons from other cities with more successful responses is that their better definition of the roles helps everyone to be strategic and focus their efforts where their contributions can be most effective. So I appreciate that. I wanted to bring that in with the memo from January 20th that we received from Mr. Gell and Ms. Gray, and I'm not sure which of you would be the best to answer this, but there's a portion towards the end of the memo part that references that community partners have indicated that there is substantial philanthropic interest in supporting the hotel conversion strategy. Were someone with means interested in supporting the motel conversion strategy, can you please provide greater detail about what that role would be? You know, because it's not just Echo and the city that need to be involved in this solution, there's all the nonprofits, but the business and philanthropic sector also, we need them to step up if we're going to find the resources and the will to do this. So very specifically with respect to the motel conversion strategy, can you speak to some of those philanthropic opportunities and what that looks like?
Sure, I can do that. So I will say that, you know, there are any number of ways to become involved in the hotel conversion strategy. In the case of these two particular hotels, one of the most obvious places might be to contribute dollars toward the renovation costs. So the city is coming in, if approved, would acquire the properties, and then would be looking to establish sustainable operating funds for the service providers as well as the service dollars. They always need supplementary funding to enrich those services, but one thing that we would love to see is the private sector coming in to help bring these buildings to right where they need to be, to be turned into folks' long-term homes. And that will both make best use of the city's dollars, and it will move the process along more quickly. Because as you can imagine, if we go through a process for additional dollars for renovation, there is a time cost there as well. So the memo that you are referring to has two letters of interest attached to it from our two nonprofits that have expressed interest, and I am certain that they would love to hear from anyone who has an interest in contributing to that effort.
So would that be the appropriate avenue, would be for someone to reach out to Integral Care and Caritas, or is it, is there, no, who is it that somebody talks to who feels like they would be interested in a significant investment?
So we are happy to speak with folks. I'm sure if people are interested or have relationships with Echo, they can direct those conversations, but we can certainly get them connected with opportunities within the field to contribute to the effort.
And once we were to make those renovations, are there federal dollars? And once we were to make those renovations, are there federal dollars that we're then in a position to pull down for ongoing costs as part of this?
So, the federal dollars that we would likely target first would be the possibility of project based vouchers via our local housing authority. So, we need to ensure that the property has the resources it needs to to operate, but then, once operating, we believe, or even once we have site control, we could conceivably apply for federal dollars to provide the operating subsidies, which is essentially the same as the the rent for the building. And certainly, if we see other opportunities for federal dollars on the service side, we would pursue those as well, absolutely looking for every opportunity we can to bring the city dollars in to secure the project, to solidify it so that then we can capitalize on those other opportunities.
But as a philanthropic investment, then, it's really set up that it would enable leveraging, potentially, obviously, the we have to go through the process at the federal level, but there there is an opportunity to set the stage for it to be, if not fully self sustaining, but a large portion of it self sustaining once you make the renovations that allow you to be eligible.
That's correct. That would be our hope.
Great, thank you. I just think it's really important for people to understand the real opportunity for philanthropic involvement to make a difference. And the sooner that we can get these motels converted and up and running and moving forward, the bigger dent that we can make and that we can demonstrate, as has been demonstrated in other cities, that this motel conversion approach is a cost effective and efficient way of moving forward. It's been complicated by COVID, but it is nonetheless much more cost effective than trying to build housing from scratch in terms of the timeline, as well as, you know, these being located in areas that we might not otherwise be able to to build. So, thank you.
Okay, Pio.
Thank you, Mayor. Diana, you know, we we haven't heard anything from from the Housing Department about Community First. You know, we waived the over $3 million fees for them a couple of years ago with the understanding that they were going to have 200 units built and also that it was going to house 400 people, 200 units for a single family, I'm a single person, and 100 units for married couples. Can you give us an update on that, or if you don't have that information, if you can get get it to us later on?
So, Pio, I can give you my general understanding, but we'll definitely want to get back to you with more granular detail. So, my understanding is that Community First Village has launched that phase two and that they have begun housing the first residents of that second phase, which is, I believe, between 225 and 250 additional homes. But we will certainly touch base with them, and we can come back to you with the with the report.
And I was just wondering also, is the document that is on your dashboard of when you house and they actually get people off the street into those units?
So, I am not certain about that because Community First Village is such a unique model insofar as they use predominantly private dollars. They are not woven into all of the data sets in quite the same way as some of our other partners, but but I need to understand just what the reality is there, and and we can let you know.
Yes, because it'd be great to be able to document that so that, you know, people can actually see that we're we're art getting people off the street. And I I saw that, you know, you had 147 permanent housing that you you provided last year. And and, you know, I was just wondering if whether those units not considered as community first? I mean, it's just it's just that we might be housing a lot more other more people than when than you are documenting. So, you know, just want to make sure that, you know, that that information gets out, that we are doing something. You know, we we I think what's happening also is that, you know, the community is getting frustrated because they keep seeing these campsites and they keep growing. And and what what I feel like is we're actually accomplishing what putting people, we're letting people just come back in and fill that place with people. Because of what you said, you know, you said anytime there were close to 9,000 people or they're experiencing homelessness. And I'm just wondering if we can get that information of who these people are and are they losing their house because of the pandemic and they can't get to work? Or, you know, because we are getting people off the street, but there seem to be a lot more. And it seems like, you know, these people that are are losing their homes are people that cannot afford to pay their rent. And so, and because of their their background and, you know, some might be, you know, been ticketed in the past for sleeping in the streets, and now they can't get a place to to move into. So, it'd be very interesting for me, knowing that we're going to be under a lot of pressure on the state level and in the citizens here and also that petition, to find out exactly what's going on and how we're going to be addressing those those issues that are going to be coming up pretty soon. So, with the session going on and all that, we we need to be prepared for anything that comes down on us.
Okay, colleagues, Kathy?
Just a couple of quick last points. Diana, you're at one point in your presentation, you talked about, I think, the number of individuals that the city is proposing to house or the or and has the goal of housing. I'm sorry that I don't have all I don't haven't yet printed out the presentation. I know you've made it available, and it's not any longer on the screen, but does your presentation also talk about? Well, one, I just want you to speak for a moment to the fact that that the city's efforts are just one piece of a much broader community effort. So, those numbers aren't really reflective of the number of individuals each year that are being housed and are exiting homelessness through the work of our partners, some of whom we help support through our city dollars. So, if you could just speak to that point for a sec for a minute, I wouldn't want anyone to come away with a feeling that, you know, 500 or the city's efforts are all that's going on with regard to getting individual our neighbors who are experiencing house Right. homelessness into permanent housing. And then I just wanted to express support. I know I've had an opportunity to talk with staff and with the managers and several of my colleagues about this idea of revisiting designated camping areas as and and learning from some of those consultants that have have experience with what has worked and what hasn't worked. And so just want to add my voice to that of the colleagues. And I'll I know several of us have talked about about whether it is necessary or useful to provide an IFC with some timeline for that conversation, and so I'll be continuing that over the next next couple of days to figure out if that would be helpful in in setting that conversation up for the for our council.
Sure. And as I answer, Councilmember, stop me if it sounds like I have not understood your question fully. What I will say is that, yes, as a community, we we tend to look at how many folks are housed overall, and those programs are funded through a variety of sources. And just as an example, I was able to work with the city in those first two PSH goals that were set back in 2010 and 2014, I think. And we sat around a table, and these were fairly small goals at the time, 300 units, 400 units of PSH. And putting together that puzzle of how we were going to get to those many units with those kind of resources, you know, really involved probably 15 funders in different ways for different projects. So, one of the reasons I think it's really important that we talk about having a community goal, ideally a shared goal or goals, is that really there are going to be very rarely cases in which the city goes and the city itself alone creates housing or housing opportunities, right? Almost all of these projects are going to be layered in one way or another. And so we can speak to resources that are flowing through the city, and that's perhaps what you were alluding to with the 500 units or or slots of Rapid. I will say that that is actually a combination of ESG monies flowing through the city of Austin and ESG monies that were passed to Austin through TDHCA with the input of ECHO. So, I want to help council understand what we specifically are doing in terms of the mechanics of what's passing through the city, but also absolutely be very cognizant of that overall environment where we are very much interwoven with our partners.
Leslie?
I think this may be Diana a question for later, but I would like to get an idea about any coordination or the mechanics that we would need to develop to try to get our arms around more of a coordinated regional response to homelessness. I think we find that Austin will get to the limit of what we can do as an individual city. But that is, so I would like to acknowledge all the surrounding areas in the SFA and and maybe advance that conversation more broadly. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add in, as it seems like we were maybe closer to wrapping up this conversation. I agree with a lot of the sentiments of my colleagues, especially some of the discussion of designated sites. I know that, you know, as has been stated, we had thought earlier, you know, that wasn't necessarily the way to go. I think that we're seeing some of these encampments more close to public spaces start to verge on the head count that we might see in a smaller designated campsite. So, I'm kind of interested as this has been evolving over the last several months to kind of look at, we're already seeing people organizing in spaces, you know, sharing space together. And with the addition of the pallet shelter conversation, I'm really intrigued by how that might be advantageous to a situation where we might look at doing a more designated campsite, where then you have a little more structure to how many spaces are safely being provided for people, when you might need to move them or relocate them so that people in other parts of town have another opportunity to have that first step out of unsheltered homelessness. I was able to tour the Other Ones Foundation operating over at Camp Esperanza and seeing some of the work they are doing. They also have the Workforce First Program that they operate, which I believe that contract may be coming back for renewal or additional funding this week. I know it's through Family Elder Care, and so we're still looking into some of the details of what that contracting looks like. So, I need to go back and verify that. But I think as this evolves and as we find what works for our community and different ways we might be able to find successes, I think that there is a little more tools that we have to utilize to make sure that that we're providing any and all option that might be helpful for those experiencing homelessness, especially, you know, during a pandemic, which I know must be so difficult. But I also know with the questions about some of the camping that's going on in park spaces, I know that our ordinances currently do specify that, you know, parks without a camping registration, without a permit process for camping, are something that are not included in what is currently allowed under our code. And I know that if the CDC is saying it's better not to move people for risk of them, you know, inadvertently becoming infected or infecting others, that's certainly a concern that that we want to make sure we're paying close attention to. But I know that when you're dealing with the general public using trails for, you know, recreation, transportation, you know, trying to get out and get some some fresh air for themselves as they are doing their own social distancing, that we may inadvertently be creating a situation where the general public is accidentally infecting other people and vice versa. And so I think that's an interesting conversation. I wasn't really aware of the kind of federal guidelines around how how to make sure that people in encampments are are safe during this time. But I am interested in that conversation around trying not to move them, but also knowing they may inadvertently be in a space where, you know, people who may not be social distancing and wearing masks are entering that space. And so I think it's an interesting conversation that's that's obviously involved, you know, evolving along the way. But these are some of the discussions I've thought about over the course of this morning, and I'm curious to see where where we head from from here. So, thank you for your work, and I'm glad you're on board.
Thank you.
Hi, colleagues, it is 11:54. I'm going to need to leave. Kathy, I don't know if you can take over the the chair. We have several other colleagues that are leaving at noon. I don't know if you want to come back. Someone said at the Cap Metro meeting, someone checked and said it should be a couple hours. So, I don't know if it's possible to to reconvene at, say, like 2:15 or 2:30 or something something like that, when we would all be back again. But I will leave that to you guys to to decide. Kathy, can I give you the the chair?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I was going to suggest that if we if we can, we try to hit the other items on the polled list before we before we break.
All right, guys. I'll be back. Thank you.
So, I guess the first question the mayor had asked was about Cap Metro. So, Cap Metro folks, do you have an estimate of when you might be back? Councilmember?
It well, it's it's, I don't know, see what what Councilmember Renteria thinks, but it seems like it, I don't know that we could predict before 3:00. I think, Pio.
Councilmember Renteria, do you have an estimate?
Hold on. I just talked to Ed, and I think they're going to convene the meeting at 12:30. Andy, you know?
Yeah, there's a public hearing at 12:00. As you know, we often don't have much in terms of participation there, but the meeting convenes at 12:30.
So, I I really don't know. I I don't believe that we have that much to discuss, but we are going to be electing the officials for vice chair and committee assignments and stuff like that. So, I really don't have an idea how long it's going to last.